Everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we welcome each of you this evening to our meeting. We're not quite accustomed to having a crowd this large, but welcome to Atlanta. And trust that we can help you out. We'll move on with business tonight. First order of business is the approval of our prior minutes. We have three meetings, but we have minutes that need to be approved for. April the 12th, regular meetings. Do I hear a motion that those minutes are approved?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting, April 12th.
I'll hear a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next meeting was our festival meeting, also held on April the 12th. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion we approve those minutes also?
Hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then our last meeting was held on April the 25th. This was an executive session meeting with the count of two years.
Make a motion to set.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our reports this evening. Andy?
Right under water plants treated 699,000 or 50 gallons since the 12th. Our average daily usage is up to 49,939. Fire hydrants have been flushed. We use approximately 100,000 gallons of water. Installed three new meters. And the water meter's been red from month to April. And the wastewater been forming daily checks to the lift stations, PONs, and the SSO. During rain events, sewer plants closed and were not discharging. Our weekly sewer samples are complete. We had three sewer connection inspections. We started and tested our new chlorination system. And it works flawlessly. The system performs beyond the design expectations. I think it's like, we can't even discharge as much water as it'll handle. And then, we're gonna, one of the things that kinda got left out of the project, we're gonna have to purchase a new chlorometer in sewer plant. I'm not gonna use the drinking water to put in the test wastewater.
Wow.
And then, been trying to find one on eBay. I haven't had a leak system yet. I'm trying to avoid it. Quit paid retail price must over about $1,300. When I get the new one, I wanna use it at the water plant and use our current one for wastewater. It's, you know, it's 11 or 12 years old now. And then, we're still waiting on our modified MDS permit to start coordinating. I called to try it the day they have their thing. I'm not sure when they're gonna get back to us. No idea where with that. And the work at the sewer plant's almost complete. Bio books for the pond has been ordered. I was able to find a coupon code for those. We saved $444 on that order. And we'll start treating them as soon as they arrive. You know, the streets, tobacco's been serviced. CSU's not made any progress on the street sidewalk repairs. I'd like you guys to set a deadline. Some of the cuts have been here for over a year. We've got one area where they undermined the street. It's sinking. Where he's gonna have to be cut out, like with flowable fill or something's gonna have to go into it. And then, you know, after our walkthrough, they still tried to make subpar repairs. And even after being told it was unacceptable. And they kinda panicked when we were doing potholes because they thought I was fixing them. But, you know, if they're not gonna make satisfactory repairs in a timely manner, I just wanna hire a contractor. I mean, I've already warned the phone company about it. And everybody just seems to think it's no big deal. You know? And I want this stuff fixed.
Do we have a bond? We haven't released for them yet?
Yeah, we got a bond with the phone company. But I just wanna tell them, hey, you know what? You guys got two weeks, three weeks, one week, whatever it is. And we're gonna get them fixed. You know, the phone company panicked when we were doing potholes. And I told them, you know, we weren't fixing those cuts. Said I'd be marking them all. And they're doing nothing. So, you know, like you guys.
They'll flood a fire.
Like you come up with some short deadline so I can contact the phone company and send them an email and say, hey, you got till this day. Make your repairs.
I was used to taking do something like this. I don't have.
Well, they oughta be able to fix it two or three days. I mean, yeah, if they bring a group up here. And, you know, in most places, which we didn't talk about, I mean, you know, most, most big towns, your street cut permits for seven days or less. I mean, Westfield, it's three days. From cut to when that job's finished, whatever you're doing under there, you have three days to have that back to where it's been. Like I said, we've got some that are over a year old. And we met about this, we talked about this. They were supposed to be done last fall before winter. And here we are. They're still like that.
You guys have any thought on a time frame? Wanna give them two weeks or?
Why, that's generous.
Two weeks, yes.
That's generous, but, yeah.
And I don't know if you need to notify them in writing?
I'll send them email. I'll notify them. I've talked, I mean, I've talked to him verbally about this. I mean, I'm not kidding, like a dozen times. Yeah. We just had that walkthrough.
You had that walkthrough? You recalled the day of that?
It was right before our last meeting. It's two, two and a half weeks ago. I mean, I have to go back and look at the exact date, but.
But it was before our last meeting?
Yeah, just before our last, I mean, we're, it's, we're going on three weeks since the walkthrough.
So, two weeks.
And what I, here's, here's my beef. The phone company's trying to shift it off on me like I need to deal with their contractor. And I've told them, I'm not doing that. I'm dealing with you. Permit was issued to you, the bond is with you, everything's with you.
Yeah, 'cause we told them, so through them, they.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not dealing, I'm not riding, I'm not gonna ride their contractor, call their contractor. That's what they keep wanting me to do, and I'm not doing it. I warned them. So, I'll give them a deadline. Say until after this date. We're fixing it.
Today's the 26th. The 10th is to the 10th, be two weeks from today, so. If you want to vote for it on the 10th.
May 10th?
May 10th, if everyone's comfortable with that.
I'd say May 9th. And then, if they haven't gotten repaired on the May 9th, and then on the 10th, we can vote to.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Move forward with some other contractor, whatever.
We will have a meeting the next night.
Following the deadline.
We can take whatever actions necessary to.
I think Andy oughta write it up with the specs that he's wanting them to put that back because I know he's talked to me, and he's told him it's gotta be hot mix, the thickness of the asphalt, and they're using a cold mix and putting.
Couple inches.
They're putting bank run in, or not bank run, but crushed gravel and things like that in the potholes and stuff. And Andy needs to specify the type of material he wants in there and the thickness of the asphalt repair, and it's gotta be hot mix.
I have a retract to who he's doing. I told him they could use full depth surface. So, they didn't have to buy binder, do that. And then, I said, you know, if you're gonna bring in lifts and compact it and, you know, use surface, I'm fine with that, but.
Put that in writing to them and put your specifications on there in the deadline.
Okay.
And then, on the 10th, we can, if that's not repaired, Andy can have it in his report on the 10th, and then we can decide what to do from there.
All right. And then, on the potholes, we used a little horn, six tons of mix. We had a few small holes that were left. We ran out of mix at the end of the day, so I'm just gonna get those taken care of. Tree at the park's been planted, burn house is installed. And then, I've located telephone poles for the ball diamond. They're free. They're gonna be delivered by the due contractor free of charge.
Yeah, I hope.
We can do some kind of better around there. He can gate on that. And then, lastly, the camera's post office. It's got nothing on it. And I didn't see, I didn't complain about kids loitering. I didn't see any kids loitering on there. Honestly, there's very few kids getting on it. So, I won't tell them.
Probably have to wait till summertime when they're out.
In the building, we've had one special free occupancy permits were issued. Two building permit inquiries, three zoning inquiries, and then the April census report is complete. Has been submitted. Any questions? I just wanna give them.
Because when I go in the post office, I'm, after the last meeting, and I told Bruce, I said, there's nothing on the camera. He, he wants to argue with me, you know, well, that's impossible because Sandy saw this and Diddy said that and blah, blah, blah. And I told him to know that it had been brought up, that we were thinking about just giving them that camera. And he kinda him hog around and can somebody show me how to use it and blah, blah, blah. But the bottom line is, no more than that camera cost and no more than it'll cost to replace. We just need to give them that camera, so. It's their, it's their problem. It's their baby. It's not, there's no reason for these guys to be tied up at the wages that they make for three hours a week looking at nothing. So.
I make most link in the camera?
I'll second.
I can tell you, it was 79, it was 79 bucks. I mean, I spend like three hours a week on that thing.
Was that a second?
I seconded, yeah.
And again, if there's issues, as we discussed at the last meeting, contact the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
With any issues that you have. All in favor?
Aye.
I need to check this week. When I do, I'll take it out, I'll go over it with them, show them everything on it.
I didn't know he's gotta put a battery in it once a week.
Four batteries.
Or batteries, whatever. I didn't know he's gotta put batteries.
I'm not donating batteries.
He's gonna, he's gonna see, I mean, seriously, it takes about 5,000 images a week. About what's been happening. And I'm telling you, very few kids go in there. It's, most of them are widener. That you see, you know, on it. And the ones, the few that you see are maybe teenagers, they go in, they get mail, and they leave. Saw one girl standing there that might've been listening to messing with her iPod or something after she got her mail. And back out to the where she went, so.
Luke's responsible for maintaining that building itself.
Post office is.
Post office.
Their building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, we really don't have any, other than kindness of our hearts, we don't have any kind of responsibility to them whatsoever. Well, I think we've already been over backwards helping out.
I agree.
More important thing to worry about. Give them the camera if they're able.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our enforcement office.
Written seven notices. And then, just a reminder, it's mosquito time, so tip your buckets, get rid of your tires. I've already seen quite a, you know, had seen several mosquitoes. Good, thanks. That's all I have?
Yeah. Rob, do you have anything to report this evening?
I just have something on Kurt's fur. When we make up full time, we, um, you know, obviously he did the fur. The, the, Perk does, it's an enlargement. I don't know if I told you guys this at budget time or not, but we couldn't actually join into Perk until July 1st of this year. And we have to do a, we have to have Fred sign this resolution for it. So, but they said we could pay in, you know, his time from January until July 1st. So, we've been withholding that, that 3% from his paycheck. And, you know, we're gonna, we just plan on doing the transfer when he's done paying. Well, that's not what they mean at Perk when they, they quote, they, they give you a price of what it is to buy into it. So, when I submitted all the paperwork, to buy in Kurt's past service is $4,250. And that's a $2,212 difference for the whole year of what it would've been if it was just the 11.2% like what, what it is for everybody else.
So, they charge a fee to buy into it and go back retroactive?
Well, they'll put it into his, his Perk. But you don't have to buy into it. And once he's here for a year, they will vest him into that. They'll give him that six years, or six months time, but there won't be any money amount attached to it. So, we don't have to buy into it. But if we do, it's $2,212 more than what we budgeted for the whole year. So, I just want you guys to give me some direction on that. Plus, the 3% that I said, well, we've been withholding 3% every week, you know, for, so when it comes time to catch it up, basically on July 1st, we can transfer that out of payroll and send it into Perk. And she said, you can't do that. So, we're gonna have to reimburse him that $336 that we've transferred. I mean, it's there, it's been transferred into. So, we're gonna have to reimburse him that $336. And then, it's up to you all whether or not we're gonna buy, buy out that first six months.
And if we don't buy into that first six months, he can start January 1?
Yeah, he just.
Or July 1, I mean.
Yeah, July 1, he'll start. And then, he'll, he'll get, once he's here a year, he'll get credit for that six months. It just won't be.
Can I say what he told July 1?
This, will this benefit him before, I mean, when will this benefit him?
He won't even be vested for 10 years, so.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, it's really, he's not gonna be able to retire until, until his age, but it'll be better than hopefully.
He won't ever retire. Nobody will, nobody's gonna get a retire.
That 3% of it comes out of his check is his.
Is his, yes. So, you'll see that on the claims next. I mean, I'll have to.
If he terminates it anytime, that, that goes back to him.
Well, that money goes back to him, his payroll. We'd cut him a chip for it.
Is he aware of this?
No, I haven't talked to him. I'll talk to you guys first.
I didn't realize it's how that worked either. I thought once the boy started, you can start automatically run and roll and run into it. I didn't realize it was like a six-month waiting period without buying into it.
When I told them, you know, when I asked them if Luke had, you know, started the contribution to January, they were like, yeah, sure, you can. But they didn't tell me it was at a different rate than what.
What's the interest rate the town pays into that?
11.2%.
Town pays 11? Okay.
This resolution has to be submitted by May 31st.
Yeah, can we, can we table this for the next meeting?
Sure.
I'm not comfortable without.
Processing it?
Processing this information.
Sure.
So, it's two weeks to look into this completely before I, before we make a decision.
I'll make copies for you all.
Please.
Yep.
Thank you. That way we can process that. All right, anything else?
Nope.
There's any old business tonight? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have Joe Murray here this evening. Joe?
Joe right here.
Along with, uh, Ruth, I guess. Welcome.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
I'm gonna give the floor to Steve Brzezinski.
Steve?
He started the Emveks Orange travel baseball organizations. Awesome.
Welcome, Steve.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. And we'll, we'll try to make this quick and brief.
Of course.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out. We have a few families here and some kids and some parents and some coaches. And I'd love to go around and just have everybody introduce themselves, but we won't take that time right now. But we got a lot of, a lot of, a lot of kids here that are in support. I wanted to give you just, we're, Joe had brought this up to me recently about the ball fields just on the side of town. And we, about four years ago, we started a little baseball organization. So, we had one team. We got done playing with our rec ball, and we're like, oh, it's summer. We should be able to play some more baseball. So, we formed a little team. I have a company called Emveks, and our company color is orange. So, that's where that comes from. So, we call ourselves the Orange. And the next year, we had a couple teams. Two years ago, we had three teams. And then, this year, or last year we had three teams. This year, we actually have nine teams. So, it's, I wanted to give you just a quick little, I guess, a quick little, gave myself a couple of notes here, but just kind of a quick introduction of who we are. And we essentially are a group of parents that wanted to play a little more ball, want to play some competitive ball. But we wanted to keep the costs down. We wanted to not be as expensive as some real full-time travel programs. So, I would call us kind of a, but we, I guess, we're considered travel. But when we travel, it's just around central Indiana. So, we're just around, you know, Indianapolis, Fishers, Noblesville, Westfield, et cetera. So, but one of the things that we're very focused on is just building character and building fundamentals and giving kids an opportunity that may not have had that opportunity to play at a higher level of competition. We're not the triple A regional teams. We're not even, we're probably in that single A, double A. We're just having a good time. We focus on fun, we focus on family, and we focus on competition and building, building character. And one of the things that is a challenge for us is because we've got kids from a number of, I mean, Noblesville, Lappel, Pendleton, Fortville, Fishers. There's, I'm probably missing some of the cities, but we're all from Hamilton County. But we don't really have a place to call home, so to speak. So, you know, even this spring, you know, with weather, you know, well, teams will go out to practice at a field and then, you know, another team will have it. Because we don't have the ability to reserve a field. So, we're, we're fighting for a field. And we always are playing away games. We're always playing other places. And so, when Joe brought this, feels like, let's go take a look. I mean, could that be a possibility? You know, basically, we've got a lot of people as showing here tonight that, over 100 families that are part of our, our youth baseball organization. And a lot of different people with different talents, different abilities. We're all volunteers. We're all just putting in effort to make a difference in the lives of our kids. And it just continues to have year after year growth. So, that's kind of a quick little overview of our, of our organization. But when we think about, we've, Joe and I came up yesterday, a couple days ago, and that we stopped there on the way up tonight. And there's a lot of potential there in those fields. And as they say on real estate, I guess, the bones are, are really good there.
They're very good there.
And, and we, as an organization, we take a lot of pride in who we are. You know, I wouldn't necessarily, we're not necessarily a faith-based organization, but we do focus on faith and family. We have a team prayer. And it's, it's part of our nature to take real pride in what we do, where, how we're represented, how, what our image is when we're out playing. And all of these coaches and parents can attest that anytime we have our beginning season kickoff, we always talk about the things that matter. And that's gonna be about character and helping these boys become little men and putting solid foundation in them. We have little, little decals that we hand out to the kids or I would give them to the coaches to hand out, and we call it earning a slice. And what that is all about is, it's not necessarily if, if that player has a four-for-four day or he pitches a great game or whatever. It's the little things. So, we always point out, if you're there to pick up your teammate when he's down, if the opponent hits a homerun and he's coming around second base and you reach your hand out to say, hey, good shot, buddy. Those are the things that our coaches are looking for. And we award our kids with those types of little awards. So, we're, we're building things, and I think we're doing things the right way. And we've got a lot of people that take a lot of pride in what we do. And we think about the fields out there. If we would have the opportunity to call that home, we would take that same pride in those fields and make it something that the community in town of Atlanta would be proud of. You know, a little elbow grease and a little effort. Like I said, we've got a lot of people that are willing to jump in and different talents, whether it's construction, surveying, just so many different. From a parent's standpoint and coach's standpoint. One of the things that we've noticed up around here, there's not a lot of, you know, I guess, baseball action happening. And then, we've got Tipton has some over in this direction, and I think.
Cicero.
Cicero. And certainly, anything that we would do, we would want to, you know, open that up to. You know, it's one of the things, one of my issues that I have, I have a hard time saying no to people. So, that's why we have nine teams this year. So, it's one of these things that has just continued to grow. But there are different communities. So, if there was somebody from this area, from Atlanta area or surrounding rural areas that wanted to form a team and be part of the Orange program, we would welcome it. We've, Joe's from Noblesville, Kevin's Noblesville, Fishers. We've got, we've got kids from just so many different little communities that we would be open to that. I don't know a ton about Atlanta other than, so I don't know what the community would, if there is rural, there would be enough players in the area. But that would be an option, and we'd be certainly open to that. Anything that we would put into the, into the fields in maintaining, you know, we would think that that would be a benefit for, for everyone. I guess, when it, some of the things that I don't know, because this is all new to me. And I have a, just like all of us here, we all have jobs and families and all of those things. So, I don't know how this structure would work. I know like each of our teams carries insurance, you know, because anytime we go play at a tournament, we have to show our team insurance and that sort of things. Financial wise, I don't know how that would all work. I guess I'm kind of here just to, and feel free, anybody else to, to jump in. But I, I'm just here to make an offer that I know that we would be, if we were to have the opportunity to kind of call those fields home, we would put in the time, effort, and I guess sweat equity to make it look great. One of our coaches is a VP at Mainscape. He's talked with them that they could come and help clean up the fields and get them in order and that sort of thing. So, there's just a lot of things that we could do. And we would take, take pride in them, like I said, as if, as if they were, they were, they were our own. And, you know, one, one of the other things was, you know, when it comes to, how, you know, how, how would you handle costs? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know the answers to that. And I think all I would say is we'd be open. We don't really have a budget, so to speak, from a standpoint of, we try to keep costs down per team. So, a lot of times, we're about 25% of the cost of what other full-time travel teams are. So, it doesn't mean that we couldn't budget that. And we also could, we could hold some games, potential, some small tournaments that we could raise some funds through those and could, could do some, some revenue share there to cover costs, maybe electric, water, and that sort of thing. Concessions, possibly doing some revenue share there. I, I don't know, but I know we've got a lot of people here. And they're here to show that they're here to support and are on board. But I guess that's, that's really all I wanted to present was just to let you know who we are. But we would love to have the opportunity to have a place to call home and put some elbow grease in and make those fields look kind of something that everybody could be proud of.
I'd love to see those fields alive again. I'd love it.
I have got just a little handout for each of you that just kind of, it's a picture of our team from last year. And then, it just shows just some bullet points and then kind of what our vision and our promise would be to the community.
Welcome. And that's something that you guys can.
Thank you.
Take with you. All right.
Thank you. So, anybody else? I mean, I guess, any parents or other coaches that want to say a word about the program or what it's meant to you? Is there anybody here that's been here since the first year? McVay's? McVay's? So, this is their first year. Obviously, I have a son here and a son here who has been, and then, uh, then we have some, some, some new folks here. So, so I think we just engage with some, I guess, my next item was questions and answers or, I don't, don't know exactly which way to go from, from here, but just to thank, thank you for, uh, allowing us to be here and, uh, the ability to potentially make those fields our home and, and make it vibrant for the community.
Thank you. Applause. Give you a little history of where we're at with the Ball Diamonds. Youth League was formed several years ago by a group of volunteers here in town and they developed that down there and we had a vibrant youth program for years. And, uh, unfortunately, in the last, what would you say, four or five years?
Three, four years, yeah.
It's kind of fallen away and to the point that the fields were there dormant. And, you can see as, you know, you look around, there are, there are a lot of needs there. Uh, we, as a town council, uh, stepped up and, uh, took over that facility, okay? The youth league had folded, basically, so the town of Atlanta took that and, uh, you know, we hold title to that. It's just part of the town now, uh, covered under our insurance and, uh, basically our, uh, street department, town department, Andy, basically, Andy has a helper, has been maintaining it, you know, keeping it, keeping it mode, obviously, no work down on the fields or anything like that. And, now, you folks appear tonight, I mean, you're really the first, uh, youth group that has showed any interest, to speak of.
That's interesting.
We had a men's league guest, men's softball league down in, on the field, but, so I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm very much interested in...
I am too.
I am too.
And, you folks coming. I mean, it sounds like you have a need for a place to play and we have a need for someone to use the facility and to maintain the facility and make it what it once was. I don't know, I don't know if you noticed the dugouts?
Absolutely.
I mean, I can remember when they built that, oh, my goodness. I, I mean, I can remember as a kid just sitting on a bench in a field and these dugouts that you went down in, like, you know, like the big leagues.
Yeah.
That was something, you know, and, you know, it, uh, there's a lot of potential there.
Well, that's what we thought too.
And, a lot of potential. And, if we can, if we can partner to do that, I don't know, I, I think it's...
I think it's a great opportunity.
I know Joe, he's been involved in youth baseball in the past and, well...
Yeah, Coach, I'm a hire.
Yeah.
Of course, my boys all the way through P W, all the way through Farm League out there until they went to Babe Ruth, both my boys and...
There's potential there for concessions, little concession building, I don't know if you noticed that or not.
Absolutely.
And, uh, so, I'm encouraged.
I got, I just got one question, you may comment, that if there was any volunteers that would want to form a team here, you'd be more, they'd be more than welcome to join. Uh, I don't know, that was one of the issues we had, there was nobody that would take an interest in volunteering to be a coach or try to keep this youth group going here. And, I do know that there's a lot of young kids that would love to play ball, but there's no, there's no adults and there's no interest in, you know, the, uh, adults that would want to do that. Now, would you guys, uh, consider taking on any kids from this area or else trying to form an, an additional team with kids from here or putting some of these kids on the teams that you already got existing?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and, and that's really kind of how we've grown organically. Um, and a lot of the ways this, this, that we've grown the organization hasn't been the traditional of tryouts and that sort of thing. We've had a couple little, we call it workouts, but not like, it was more about keeping families and kids together and building relationships than it was, all right, we're going to take the top twelve kids and, you know, focus win-win-win-win. That's not our approach.
That's not what I want to see.
Yep.
I don't want to see that.
Our focus is...
I've seen it in the past, I've competed against it and it's not fair and it's not fun to the kids and, you know, it's not teaching them anything.
Yeah.
And, I really wouldn't want to see that at all.
Yeah. So, the opportunity would be there. I mean, Kevin would be somebody that had come in and, you know, was looking for an opportunity with, with his son, uh, as well. Um, I think Lee back here as well, Lee Tate, um, but, uh, Joe this year.
Well, I can just kind of talk about a little bit of that too, I mean, that's something that I loved about seeing this, we had, we'd always played rec up until this year and we're looking for something a little more like a thirteen-year-old and an eleven-year-old and, um, we went to a lot of tryouts, to a lot of different teams around, anywhere from Greenfield to Avon to up north more, just, just seeing what was out there, seeing what was available. And, what I love about Steve's heart is, you know, every year you're going to lose probably one or two players, you know, from the previous year's team. So, you are going to do a little bit of the workout or tryout to try to fill those spots. And, in the process, he had so much interest in certain age groups that he just decided to go ahead and form a couple more teams. You know, instead of only taking two kids, you know, and I'll point out the eleven U side of it, I mean, instead of just replacing a couple of kids, only eleven U, ended up forming another two full teams in the eleven U age group, just because it was that, that much interest in it. And, even when I asked, you know, and I, that's actually when we wrapped, wrapped, we were at an eleven U tryout and I, I asked him, "Do you have, do you have a thirteen U team?" And, he said that he thought he had some interest and, and ended up that really wasn't. And, I was like, "Well, I probably could find you enough kids that would be interested." And, we ended up forming a thirteen U team, just based on, you know, just some guys that had played together on some other teams or played rec together and wanted to do a little bit more. So, um, that's what I love so much about coming into the organization. Um, we've, I, we've lived in northern Noblesville for the past twelve years. Uh, I'm familiar with, uh, the fields up here and I know the, the hard work that this town and people in this town put into those. And, you know, I, I hate seeing them not being used myself when I drive, I work in the area as well and I hate seeing that and, because they're great fields, I mean, there's a lot of great things done with those.
That's right.
And, um, you know, it kind of just started as I'm, I was just kind of looking for a place to practice with my thirteen U, because it's, it's hard to find a bigger field and an area to do that. Um, just kind of, one idea led to another and I kind of brought the idea to Steve, see if, you know, if we could ask you guys, what, what were you wanting and is there a way we can partner with you and figure out something to make it beneficial and work for?
I'm impressed with, I'm an ex-Orange attitude. I'm impressed with you guys coming up here and you talking about character building, uh, family bonding, relationships with one another and...
I'm impressed with the sportsmanship.
I'm also impressed with the fact that you come up here and you mentioned that you're looking for a home and not just a ball field playing. That speaks volumes to me. And, uh, I think that the board, we've all talked about in the past, we're, we're looking for someone who is, uh, has that kind of interest in mind, adult field, people who are willing to, uh, put the, uh, effort into to keep it up and running, keep it nice and are dedicated, you know, to staying there. You know, I'm impressed with the whole group myself.
Well, excuse me, I'm, I'm Kevin, Kevin Kada, I'm the twelve U coach and just listening. Um, great story, what you're talking about. Um, Sunday, we had our first tournament at Vault Creek. Um, we gave up fourteen runs in one inning. And, we were in the game. We were actually winning like three to two, gave up fourteen runs. Everybody was quiet, fans, everybody. I said, "Let's never quit, never give up." We put seven runs up and it was the best inning that we ever had. So, the point of my story is, is that piggybacking off of what Joe and, and what Steve were talking about is, is that, um, it's, competition is number two. We build families, make sure the kids, number one priority, is have fun. That's it. That's what I do. Um, just have fun, work hard, do the best you can and it'll pay off. You don't, you're not going to win every game. We're not going to hoist up any, uh, World Series trophies. It's not going to happen. They're twelve years old, they're thirteen, they're eleven. Look at all these kids back here that are out here playing. That's what it's all about right here.
When I coached, I always said, "It was not whether you win or lose, it's how you played the game and if you had fun, that was the best part."
That's it. That's what I do. And, you know what? My kids were down, but you know what? We went back, tore it up, put up seven runs, we still lost, but guess what? Everybody was happy. And, that's what we're about. And, you know what? I'm going to tell you right now, we've got a lot of people, a lot of resources that can actually turn those fields around. We do. That will definitely come out here, my time, free time, volunteers, I'm an ex-Orange. I got parents, I got assistant coaches, I have parents right now that are dying for a field and would come out here, landscape it, whatever we need to do. We would definitely partner with you guys, absolutely. Concessions, I love it. I didn't even think of that. But, you know, just anything and we'd be more than happy to contribute any way we can.
Do you guys have a board or is it just a joint, everybody?
I'm sorry, what was that about?
Yeah, I said, "Do you guys have a board for your organization? Board members on it?"
We don't.
You don't? So, it's just...
We will be. In fact, I met with somebody this week now about forming, uh, our Orange Youth Baseball into a five oh one C three, just because, well, there's a few things. First of all, it's been a tremendous amount of work, not only me personally, everybody else as well, but to try to coordinate now over a hundred families involved, uh, in nine different teams and, uh, all of these people here, everybody chips in. But, sometimes it's, it's hard, sometimes to delegate work because it sometimes takes longer to delegate it almost, but if, once we have this, this, this organization formed, we'll be able to make decisions as a board, plan as a board and, uh, it will be a, uh, I don't know how much, I mean, it's going pretty smooth, but, uh, but it's, it's...
Chair's not that smooth. Chair's not that smooth right now. But, uh... Well, it's a lot of work. I mean, you know, Steve, he, you know, ordering equipment, getting stuff going and he's made it actually kind of be easy, but it's a lot of work. Getting orders through Raleigh, getting the kids, the, you know, looking like a team. And, that's what we're about, you know? Getting the proper uniforms, making sure everybody's looking right, you know? Family, friends, making sure the, the families have the gear ordered and got the shirts because, let's face it, I mean, parents want to dress with the, with the attire.
You're in Orange country up here with highs.
Absolutely, you know? And, all we want to do is just represent...
Yeah, our color's not too far off, right? Isn't it?
Exactly.
They're it.
We just, we just want to represent Indiana, Hamilton County, put the best out there and let the kids have fun because, and I can't speak for Joe, I mean, I know Joe, but a lot of the, we, they were talking about travel stuff, okay? So, traveling around by us is like, and I'm sure you guys know this, but it's like eighteen, twenty-four hundred dollars a year, okay? Steve B. right here has given us the opportunity to control our teams and our budget for under six hundred bucks, okay? Now, I work hard. Do I want to pay eighteen hundred dollars for my kid to play on the Bulls or the Bandits or whatever?
No.
He's twelve. We're not going to be hoisting up any trophies. Um, I want to be compassionate to parents who can, because four of my kids on my team can't play travel baseball. They're going to play baseball only because of the cost. So, they continue to play rec, but they're good enough to get over that hump, okay? So, um, I look at it like they're just, they just can't fork out eighteen hundred dollars. So, Steve has done this and I have, and Joe will tell you, my budget right now, all my parents have given me five hundred dollars and I have a full schedule. Just need a field. Just have fun. Open it up to everybody, just have a lot of fun. I can't speak for anybody else, but that's what it's about, just having fun, you know?
Now, do you guys have any plans, like you was just saying there, that there's kids that could play on the travel team, are good enough to play, but they can't afford it? You guys have anything kind of, uh, down the road or in the future that try to come up with some kind of funds that would allow those type of kids that can't afford to go on a little further and step up and be part of that team? Is that there important to me? Because I've seen a lot of kids that can't even afford to be on the baseball team, they can't even play regular baseball, their parents don't have the money and I see that a lot, you know? And, then poor kids suffer because the parents, you know, and it ain't the parents' fault. I mean, you know, everybody has hard times and, you know, you got to do what you got to do to survive, you know? And, sometimes letting your kids play sports or do something that he really needs to be out doing, they can't afford it. So, if there's some way you guys can do that, I'll tell you what, that, that means a lot to me. And, I'm all in favor of this, because I, you know, I'll tell you that right now, I want to see those fields used, I want to see them used often, you know? I like to see them out there with the lights on at night, you know? Have night games and every day of the week, you know? That's what I'd like to see, that diamond.
That's when you feel like you're really playing baseball.
You know, and, you know, that diamond...
How many of you boys like playing under the lights?
It's all different ballgame whenever you get the lights on.
I like playing at high noon.
But, you know, um, I know that I'm in favor of it myself, speaking for myself. And, I would, you know, I know there's a lot of legalities we'd have to work out that through. And, I asked if you had a board, you know, that we could maybe meet with if the rest of the board's in favor of it and sit down and work out the details and, uh, find out kind of what your schedule is, how often you want to play and the legalities of the insurance and this and that and how we're going to cover expenses and this and that. I, I, I personally am a hundred percent in favor of this.
I agree.
Me too.
I agree too.
Unanimous from this board. It's exciting.
Yeah.
We've dealt with some negative things in the past few months.
This is a bright...
Yay, positive.
This is the most positive thing that I've dealt with since I've been on this board.
You teach our politicians some sportsmanship too?
Yeah. It is. It is.
Thank you.
As John said, I'm sure there'll be some, some details, unless you...
We probably need a motion that the board is unanimously, are looking to have a relationship between the board and, and the next, in the next...
Do you need to make a motion? Do I hear a second? No?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Melissa, what's the next step? Because it's baseball season right now, so something needs to happen.
The next step is we'll probably need to get a contract in place. And, what I can do is look to see what, um, other towns like Cicero have done to, um, work with.
Well, Arcadia too.
You guys, are you needing a place to practice right away or?
I have a Friday schedule tomorrow evening.
Yes, that's a yes.
Well, I mean, they, you know, we've got, you get, if your team's got insurance, we have coverage of the field and, you know, liability insurance out there now. And, we've let other teams and people practice out there. We actually have, it's a, a local guy here that he is part of some traveling team. And, he had come up and showed, mentioned some interest in it and to, in, uh, doing something out there, but he never did come back and never did come up with any details. He just started practicing out there and bringing kids from I don't know where and different places because they're in the same boat, you know? They look for a field to practice at and they're just moving to one place or another. He was even talking about how expensive it is to rent a field to play these, you know, practice on so that they can have their travel team together. And, you know, they, of course, he's seen that when the town took this field over last year, that he thought it was an opportunity for him to come in and, uh, you know, we were willing to talk with him, but he never came back. But, he did just start using it. So, he has been out there practicing with teams and different things. But, uh, you know, if you guys have got a board and everything and whatnot and I, personally, I don't have a problem with him coming to start practicing up there now, since we have liability coverage and insurance on that, if you, uh, go ahead and use it and we can...
Some of our teams I know do have insurance as well, um, for many, you know, that we wouldn't carry like property liability type things, but we have...
Insurance on the players and the coaches and that type thing.
Yeah.
And, if you could get us a copy of that, of the teams that are playing, so we could have that, you know, as the teams that are going to be out there? You know, I have no objection to them going ahead and using the field and then we can sit down with whoever you guys want to represent, you guys at the present time, since you don't have a board for them?
Probably me and some of the coaches, so I think that's...
And, you know, I, I'm willing to sit down and have, you know, schedule some meetings with them and go ahead and work out some details and the legalities of it and let them go ahead and start using the field if, uh...
If we were, would it, would it be okay if we started to make some improvements to to the infield and, or if we.
I don't see why not.
Okay.
I would want to check the insurance policy before we started doing changes, I think.
I think they're just gonna improve the dugouts and stuff.
Like not do anything with the structures or.
No, just repairs or, you know.
In fact, I think really to make it really easy, I think it's just getting some of the weeds out of the.
Yeah.
Prepping the diamonds and stuff and that type of thing.
Yeah, that is.
Thinking about.
Yeah, nothing will be changed down there.
Not structural.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's something that would probably be in agreement today. You know, no structural changes or buildings.
Put up a sign, no dogs. Cause there are dogs everywhere down there, so these kids don't want to play in that.
Slide a little easier.
Yeah, because I have two dogs and they run down there, but we always clean up after because no, I don't want my kids running through that.
If there's any type of, other than just prepping the field, if there's anything else you guys are interested in trying to do as far as some of the dugouts or repairs or something like that, I mean.
We are interested in doing that.
And you know, I'd say contact Andy, he's, he's our utilities superintendent and you know, pretty much street and everything. So he would be kind of in charge as to what type of materials we wanted to be using and how, you know, we want to do it. I mean, basically, I mean, replacing siding on the dugouts, you know, that, the kids just used it, they destroyed that with nobody down there. And it's a shame because it's an excellent field. Both of those are excellent fields. When they're up, when they're in, when they're taken care of, that's an excellent ball field to play on. I played on, you know, with my kids several years and you know, with a little hard work, I mean, it could be put right back in, you know, really good shape.
Any hand like the load and we could certainly put some good sweat equity into there as we looked, we stopped there on the way up here today. You know, there's some really good potential there. And we, you know, for us, we want to leave it better than when we came. Although we're, you know, we're looking for a, a long-term, you know, partnership because we know we've got, we're gonna have another eight-year-old team next year and it's just gonna kind of keep going. But anytime we leave, even when our teams are at other facilities that we're playing at, that's the one thing we focus at, right, boys? We clean up the dugouts, we make sure everything is better than when we left. And we would treat this, and when we invite teams out here, we want to be, we want to show pride in it. We want it to be, this is orange country, you know? This is part of, you know, so.
In more ways than one.
We want people to come out there and go, wow, we hit this place. That's what we want to happen.
You can't just wear one of those shirts, you have to earn it.
There you go.
Basically, so definitely. And there's, there's a ton of volunteers, trust me. I know for my team, I already got four or five parents that are dying to do something.
And this may spark interest in our adults here.
You know, Joe and Steve, there's a ton of people.
Exactly.
I mean, if we have a weekend, I'm just starting out there one weekend, we just have fun out there and rearrange everything or dig up weeds or whatever. We can do that too.
Have an open house and invite the parents of people in town here. And maybe you can spark some interest in adults around here.
That would be awesome.
I don't know what kind of crowd you guys attract when you have games, you know, or whether you're gonna have two separate times, one at the same time or what, whatever.
Concessions, that's big.
Please, please, something.
I know it's one set.
Yeah, on each field, there's.
There's two sets.
Two sets in each field. And they actually, that's typically when we're at a field, there's usually a couple sets of leathers. You want parents to bring the little fold-up chairs. But, but I would say that at each, at each of our games, I mean, there's probably 40 to 50 people, probably at least, from audience, fans, parents, friends and family. And then I could definitely envision, one thing I wanted to do is, I have another nonprofit called One Orphan Foundation and I've been wanting to run what's called the One Orphan Invitational, where we, we care for local foster care and national and international adoption and that sort of thing. We talk about building character in the kids, you know, we always go to these tournaments and it's, you know, it's like the mud fest and it's the home run fest and all of this. But we never have gone to one where it's really kind of where you're part of a bigger cause. So I would love to be able to, we probably couldn't get it done this year, but next year, hold what we call the One Orphan Invitational and have a tournament and where our funds actually go toward making a difference in the lives of children, adopted, foster care, and then sending out to each of the teams that participated saying, hey, by you playing in this event, this is, these are the lives that you affected. So that would be, we would look forward to being able to get the fields in the, in the, in the condition and the, and the grounds into places where we could hold, you know, like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday type of tournaments.
It sounds to me like you got a lot of play. I think we're all encouraged here just to, you know, get it started. Some for the town look forward to, someplace to go to watch the kids.
I was gonna, when we.
Because I don't like, don't know the kids, I still like to watch the game.
Still come up, watch the game. We were commenting up, when we were driving up, we said, some of these people would walk right down and that you're, and vibrancy and come out and watch some games. Especially if you get a concession going and you got a place to sit and watch some, watch some boys play in the ball. And bro. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for letting us come tonight. Boys, say thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should. I don't know if you want to try to meet at the next council meeting or.
You could, well, not have a forum and do something at a different time.
Sure. I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Are you available most evenings or?
Other than if we're having a practice or something.
If you're practicing in Atlanta, you'd.
That's right. That's true. You know, I would be willing to meet as soon as it's convenient for you. I, I would, this is a priority for us. So the sooner we could get to putting together some details and some, I guess, logistics and legalities and those types of things, I think would be, we would be definitely in favor of that.
Melissa, how much time do you feel you need to?
That I need? Oh, to, oh, I could, I can have it checked on by Thursday.
It's Thursday night?
Could you, could you have the, like, contracting agreements some of the other towns have that we could review or maybe look at?
Yeah, I'll ask Aaron what he has on file and then we'll just look at that. I know all the attorneys are gonna be gone on Friday, so I could probably find the information, consult with Aaron and then, and then get back with you.
Okay.
Can you do it on Thursday night?
I can't be here Thursday night, but Aaron maybe I can do it.
Really, I'm, so whatever it's.
We'll see.
Expedient, late, convenient for you.
And then would you guys need like just a copy of our insurance for each team that's gonna be?
Home field. And if you had, you can just bring it up there or drop it off.
Just bring it up, is there anybody I gotta drop it off to?
You can scan and email either.
Okay. Do you have? Cool. Joe, you got that?
It can be your Thursday night.
Oh, okay.
This Thursday?
Yeah, you don't have mine, so.
What's a good time for you?
Um, after five.
Okay, so we can't have a forum because I can't get it advertised, so.
Do you have that one?
Since it's swit.
Is it gonna be administrative? Could we do it?
It could be because we're talking about legal issues, so.
Well, not executive, administrative.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's just a meeting with attorney, one member of the board and.
We could have two members of the board here, we just can't have four.
And anything decided would be done at the open meeting. So I think that would be all right.
I just, I can't get the 48-hour.
Unless we want to push it till Monday?
But I think we've done administrative meetings before with John where we've had before and just haven't, um.
Let's push it to Monday.
There's no votes. Go ahead and talk amongst yourselves, I'll see if I can access anything.
Does Monday sound better than guys so that she can put it in the paper?
We can all be here.
Is Monday okay with you?
I can't meet Monday evening. I got a meeting.
Town board.
Yeah, meeting at work Monday.